Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 26, 2023 work session for the Charles County Board of Education. We always have this on our agenda. I'm actually going to take a minute to read it this evening before we do the pledge, which is the Board of Education of Charles County mission statement. The mission of Charles County Public Schools is to provide an opportunity for all school-aged children to receive an academically challenging, quality education that builds character, equips for leadership, and prepares for life in an environment that is safe and conducive to learning. And please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Mr. Swartz, it's our understanding there's no one speaking for public form. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we can move into our action item, which is a school year 2425 calendar. Are Dr. Gill and Ms. Mackey present? There we are.
Yes. And so as they're coming up, Ms. Morley, I just wanted to remind the viewing public that the board requested that we come up with an option four, if you will. We have posted it on board docs, and I believe my staff is ready to just show it and go through it really quick, and then we'll leave it up to the board.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. So, good evening. As you requested, we created an option four, which had the changes that you requested, and that shows Fair Day, September 13th, school is closed for students only. On October 14th, students, school is closed for students, but it is a workday for teachers. We're suggesting parent conferences that day. And November 5th, Election Day, schools are closed for students and teachers. That day, that option with no snow days reflected here. The last day for students is Monday, June 9th, and the last day for teachers is June 10th. Of course, when, if, no matter what calendar we, you adopt, we would add in the potential snow days at the end, inclement weather days, so that people have that oper, that information for planning. But for clarity, it's not in any of the options. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Was that it, Dr. Gill? Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Kramer?
No questions. I just wanted to say thank you all for your work on this. Thank you for, I know you've been back a few times at, at our request, of course, and I just want to say we appreciate, well, I appreciate the work that you all put into it and appreciate you coming back with this option four for us. Thank you.
You're welcome. I echo the sentiments. Thank you, Dr. Gill, Ms. Mackey. We appreciate it. And at this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt option four for the 2425 school year calendar.
Second.
Okay. And a motion made to adopt option four by Mr. Hancock and seconded simultaneously. We'll go with Ms. Kramer. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hancock.
Thank you, chairwoman today, Morley. I don't have much of a discussion, but I just want to commend my colleagues. You know, this is something that we all collectively worked together on. We reviewed data from surveys that were sent out to the public, and we collectively went through that data and realized that a lot of the data didn't fit one or two or three options that were, that were provided, and we provided input with our amazing staff that also did a wonderful job. I just want to say, before we take the vote, thank you, and it was nice working with all of you to come up with something that I do believe it reflects the wants and the wills of the public. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Anyone else? Any discussion? And agreed. I really appreciate the collaborative nature and the give and take, if you will. All right, seeing no discussion, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Any opposed? That's one. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gill and Ms. Mackey. Very much appreciated. All right, now we will move into district data and report. An impact of extended learning programs.
So, my, as my team is coming up and they will introduce themselves, I just want to say that this is a, this is a point in time during the school year, and I know the, the students are out, but before the end of the year, when we are able to gather and analyze the district data for the end of the year in comparison to the beginning of the year on important continuous data points that tell us how our students are doing. And so while we're coming to you, giving you a cumulative district view of what has been progress made by our students in almost every grade level in both ELA and math, what you also get here is some of our analysis and thinking about what have we done that results in those improvements, which is as critical as seeing the improvements is like which practices do we think we have implemented that, that really account for that. So, this presentation and the following presentation, which is sort of a deep dive into our reading programs, you'll hear us go back and forth around, well, you know, what accounts for this improvement in these grade levels? And what accounts in this other improvements in these other grade levels? Part of that is the time that we take during the summers to analyze our data so that we can make sure that practices across the schools are improving. So with that, I'm going to pass it to Steve Roberts, who's going to introduce the entire team that's here. And we are excited to go through this data. We know that you have seen this data, so my staff is ready to be focused and on target with, because we really want to hear what questions you have, but we wanted to make sure that this data is presented to you. Please note that in the state of the schools' presentation that I will be making, ma, much of these data points will again be shown to our families, because perhaps the copious numbers of usual audience members that we have for every single board meeting may not be so attentive right now, because they might be on vacation. So, we will repeat some of this data in the state of the schools as we come back for the school year in August. Thank you. So with that, I'll pass.
Oh, one moment, Mr. Roberts. Is Mr. Lucas on? I thought I, can you hear us, Mr. Lucas? I just want to make sure if he wants to say anything. Yeah, I did see him.
I can, I can hear you just calling.
Okay. All right. Let me know if you have any questions. Okay, Mr. Roberts.
Hello, everyone. I'm Steve Roberts, Director of Accountability. This is Karen Peters. She's Coordinator of Testing. Who has Melissa Mizowitz, who's the Director of Secondary Education. And immediately following this piece, we'll go right into the reading presentation, and that'll be Kim Hudler at the end there. So this is going to be in relation to strategic plan priority one, goals one and goals two underneath the priority one. So Karen's going to start from there.
So the first set of data that we're looking at is our I-Ready results. I-Ready is a diagnostic assessment that we give in both mathematics and reading, and we're going to also look at the impact of our tutoring programs. So for the I-Ready assessment, we give that to elementary, middle, and high school students. In elementary, we give reading and math in grades one through five. Middle school is grade six through eight, reading and math. And high school, we give this to English one or grade nine, English. And then students in Foundations of Algebra and Algebra one take the math assessment. We do test the students three times a year, and the students use their school-issue devices or computer labs to test during the school day in the school building. And we do give the teachers a lot of flexibility to give this assessment. We give them a window, and they can decide when within that window is best for their schedule to give the assessment along with the makeups. But they do also have the flexibility to test new students as they enroll outside the window if they need to. Those students would not be included in the results that we report to you today. We do have a reporting website. Teachers and school-wide user, users have access to the results directly after the students have finished their assessments. These are our three windows. So fall is basically the, the month of September with a little of October. Winter's in January, and spring is May with a couple days of June. So one of the pieces of information that we get from I-Ready is relative placement levels. So this is just an overview of what those placement levels mean. So the kids are assigned to one of those five levels, and they color code to make it easier to read the charts. So students that are in the dark green are the mid or above grade-level students, and those are the students that, what they consider on grade level. The light green is the early-on grade level, so these are students that have partially met grade-level expectations, and they benefit from continued grade-level instruction. Yellow is one grade level below, so students that are approaching that expectation for their grade level. The pink or the light red is two grade levels below, and then the red, the dark red, is students that are three or more grade levels below in that subject area. So the first set of charts we're going to look at is change in results from fall to spring from this past school year, school year 2223. And this is mathematics. This whole first section is mathematics. And then, so what we're going to do is look at, this is the same group of students, which is what they call longitudinal. So we're looking at the same group from the fall to the spring to see how they grew throughout the school year. So that first bar there is the fall results for the students. So you can see at the beginning of the year, we had 27% of the students in the dark red, and then at the end of the year in the spring, we reduced that to 20%. And then you can see the gains in the green and the yellow, and the decreases in the light and the dark red. And we tested about 15,000 students across the school year. So this is all grade levels combined. The next set of charts looks at the same information, so the change in the results from the fall to the spring of this past school year, but it breaks, it breaks it down by the different grade levels. One thing to note is you will not see dark red in first and second grade, because that's looking again at students that are three or more grade levels below. And at first and second grade, the test does not go down that far. So that's why you will not see dark red in those bars. But you can see the change. You'll see that all of the greens are increasing, which is what we like to see, and the reds are decreasing. And then the next slide is the same information for middle school. So we have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade mathematics. And then on the far right, we have the ninth grade mathematics, which again is at Algebra one and Foundations of Algebra. You'll notice it's 918 students, which is about half of a grade level. So the students that are in geometry or other mathematics courses do not take this assessment.
Okay, next thing we're going to look at is, we want to see what this groups, what each of these groups look like from last year to this year. So this is the snapshot of the 2122 school year, how our students ended in the spring. And then for the 2223 school year, how our students ended in the spring. So you'll see that the number is slightly different here, because in the last group that Karen showed, they had to have a score from the beginning and the end, so they could be included to show growth. This is all students that tested in the spring in 2122, and all students that tested in this, in the spring for 2223. So you can see we've made some gains from where we were last year at the spring and where we are this year. And that's what we want to see. We want to see more green. We want to see less red. So we've made that growth. So that's, that's encouraging for us. So again, this is mathematics. We'll show, after we go through these, we'll go through the same sort of slides at, for the English Language Arts. So similarly, we'll go through each of the different grade levels, and you can see where we were last year. So that first chart was first graders last year, where they were, and where our first graders this year ended. So again, you can look across each of these different grade levels, and you can see an increase in that green for all of our grade levels. And then you can see a decrease in those reds for all of our grade levels, which is exactly what we want to see. We want to see a growth. We want to see that more students in the green for each of these grade levels. And then similarly, in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. You can see in the eighth grade, they flip-flopped the, the dark green and the lighter green, but we still had the 30% there, so we were very similar to where we were. But again, showing gains from last year in each of the different grade levels at, for math. It, it's going to be interesting as we go through this to, I'll have you look a little bit more closely at this sixth and seventh grade and see the gains that our sixth and seventh graders have made. It's a, it's pretty remarkable for this, for math and where we think this might have been, what this might have been attributed to, and some of the things that we're, we've been doing as a district to, to really help these students grow. So we're going to, we'll dive, we'll dive into that a little more deeply. But you can see we're, we're definitely making those gains from where we were last year to where we are this year. So the next thing we're going to look at is not just our data, but we want to look at where Charles County Public Schools compares to other, other districts in the state of Maryland that have taken the assessment, as well as where students were across the United States that took the same exact diagnostics. So we're going to look at the spring data for the, there'll be a national set of data, then there'll be a spring for 2223. So you'll be able to see where CCPS ended in the spring, where each of these two different groups came in. And underneath of each of these charts, it'll tell you how many students actually were assessed in each of these diagnostics. So for the first one, again, you see first grade. The, the bar on the far left there is the year-to-date. That's the national numbers, which was roughly 1.1 million students that took the, the spring I-Ready assessment. And then Maryland, that was roughly 18,000 students that took the first grade assessment. And then for CCPS, we had 1,800 students. So you can see very close, if you look across each of the different grade levels, we are very, very close to where the Maryland numbers are in terms of where our greens are and where our reds are. Slightly below for the, where we were, where the national averages are, but we're, we're very, very close to where state, state data is showing for each of the different groups, which is, again, very promising to us. When we compare where we were at that time last year, you can see we made those gains from where we were this year to last year. So similarly, moving across to our middle school, you could look at that seventh grade. You can see the seventh grade, that green, we have more green than where state was. So that's where we've really made some gains for our seventh graders in our math. And then you look at the sixth grade, same thing, same thing with our eighth grade. We're, we're really seeing some math gains at our eighth grade level, which is very promising. You know, the, all the hard work that our teachers and our entire staff put together, it really is, it's showing, showing some growth here. So we're excited about that. And you can see the red, too, in each of these groups. They're, it's dropping. So we're moving kids not just from the yellow to the green, but we're using, moving kids from the red to the yellow, and we're getting those kids out of the red and getting them closer to being on grade level. And that's, we're going to talk about those typical growth versus the stretch growth and what kind of impact and what that really means and what we're striving for as, as a district. So this is what we're talking about here, what I was mentioning earlier about the typical growth and the stretch growth. So what I-Ready provides to us is when a student takes a diagnostic, they are, there, there's a measurement that they get. And the typical growth is the, it marks the annual growth an average student would, would have at a given placement. So however that student scores in the fall, it's going to calculate what that typical growth would be based on the national norms. And the last time the national norms were, were calculated was at the 18, 19 school year, pre-COVID. So using the pre-COVID numbers, they, each student is given a typical growth measurement based on what the annual is. So it's an average. So some students achieve above that, some students achieve below that. So if we meet that 50% mark for that typical growth, that means we're right where the average is, where students are. So you can see at that first, second grade, we're above that 53%. At that sixth, seventh, and eighth, we're way above that 50%. So we're really making those gains. We, we need to see, we want to see this growth at, at that 50%. So what that's saying, each student gets a percent towards, percent of progress towards their annual typical growth. They want to get to, each student wants to get to 100% of their annual typical growth. So we had 53% of first graders meet 100% of their typical growth. So we're going to also talk a little bit as we go through this, where, what those percentages are. So if a student meets 112% of their annual typical growth, that means they've grown, they grew more than what was suggested for a student that started at the exact same place they did and what their annual target should have been. So then we also look at the stretch growth, and that's, that's where we really want to get students. Because if we want to close gaps and we want to get students to get, if they started below grade level and to get to be on grade level or above grade level, they're going to have to not just make that annual growth, but they're going to have that annual typical growth, they're going to really need to work towards that stretch growth. And that stretch growth marks the amount of growth that a student should target in order to enter a path towards being, achieving at grade level. So this is where we really want to get our students achieving, is getting to that stretch growth piece. So we want to get those numbers up as high as we can. So again, you can see across the district, we're, we're seeing numbers there. I mean, this number is not at a 50%. This is, you know, a 20% type growth. So we're, we're seeing some numbers where we're seeing some growth for students at that typical growth at 50%, but we're seeing that annual stretch growth. That's where we really want to see those gains. So we're really going to look at that closely. And you can again see at that sixth and seventh and eighth grade for math, we're making some growth. Those kids are closing that gap. And it doesn't automatically mean that when a student has a stretch growth that they're, they're going to be on grade level, because they're going to need to make that stretch growth consecutively for a couple of years. Some kids, it may be the next year. It may be two or three years, just depending on how far below grade level they are. Because it only measures here, it only shows here two or more grade levels below. So if they're significantly below, it's going to take a couple of years of that stretch growth. So our, we really want our teachers targeting students to get to that stretch growth, so they can, over the few years of doing this, they can make those gains and get to where they, where they need to be, so we can close those gaps. So we're going to move into reading data, moving on here.
So these are formatted basically the same, so you're going to see the same types of information. So we're going to flip back to what we started with, with mathematics, and this is looking at the change in that relative placement from the fall to the spring of school year 2223. So you can see we started with 25% in the dark red, and then in spring, reduce that to 20%. And then our dark green started at 12% and doubled up to 25%. So again, you're seeing the increases in the greens and then decreases in the yellows and the reds, which is what we want. And again, this is longitudinal, so that's that same group of kids from fall to spring. And then this is that same information by grade level. So this is our elementary reading. And you can see there's quite a bit of growth from the green, from the fall to the spring, and then significant decreases in the reds as well.
And a reminder again, as Karen mentioned earlier, you're not going to see the dark red in grades one and two, because that's two or more grade levels below. They're not, they, they can't do that until their third grade, it'd be two levels below. So that's why you're not seeing the dark red up here until third grade.
I thought it was interesting to note that in first grade, if you can go back one. If you look at the, the dark green and the light green combined, it's four times as many students in the dark green and light green combined in the spring. So they really did make some nice growth this year.
We're really excited about the reading growth.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the next slide is the same information for middle school. So again, you can see increases across the light green and the dark green in all grade levels, including high school, and then decreases in the light red and the dark red. And also, the, the yellow generally stays about the same or decreases, but it could be that there are kids moving up into the yellow, but then yellow kids moving up into the greens. So that yellow may stay the same, but it's not necessarily the same students from the fall to the spring.
So again, we'll look at where we were last year at this time, where we are this year at this time. So this is the comparison from 2122 spring ELA data, and then 2223 spring ELA data. Again, as we're seeing across the, the growth that Karen was showing, we're seeing the same thing from spring to spring. We've made some growth as a district from, in our greens, we got more greens, and we have less in the red. So we're, we're excited about that. So we're going to look specifically at each of the grade levels. You can see that, where that really is highlighted. So again, across all the grades here, you can see more green from first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade. And again, lowering the red, except for that group in the fourth grade. So we, we lessen the group in the, in the yellow, but everywhere else, we're seeing those, those grains, gains in the green, but reduction in the number of students in the red. So excited about that growth. Now this one, similarly across the middle school, but take note in its circle there just to highlight it. We did change our testing group for the ninth grade, so we need to make that clear to you. So last year, for the 2122 school year, we only tested students at one grade level at, at the ninth grade. This year, we tested all ninth-grade students in English Language Arts. So this, you can see the number. We've doubled the number of students that we tested. So we, we anticipated to have a change in those results. So the next year is really going to be able to allow us to see the difference in the growth between the, between the two. But we could go back, which we did, and we were able to see at the ninth grade level, just the students that tested in the spring, excuse me, in the fall, and then where they tested in the spring, we saw growth there. So we're anticipating to see the same growth again. So again, we'll go through and look at national data from 2223 versus Maryland data, and then CCPS data. Really, really close to the state data here for all of these, and we're really close to the national data for these. So we, we're really excited about where we are. There's, we're definitely closing that gap from where we were last year to where we are this year, from where our students are finishing the school year in terms of their, their English Language Arts diagnostics. And again, you can see the number of students tested in each of the different groups across the bottom as well. Similar, middle school, it's really close where we are and where the state is and where nationally we are. So it's, it, it's really exciting to see this. Now, you'll notice that we're not, we don't see the, we don't have the national data for the high school. We don't, they don't provide us a typical growth. They don't have national norms. They're hoping to be able to complete a, a national, a, a newer national assessment post-COVID to get national norms redone and, and recalculate typical growth and all of those measurements, and hope to have the high schools done. But we don't have that data. So when we look at data from results for typical growth, we, we don't include the high school, because we don't have those measurements to use. We only have K through eight. But we don't, we don't test a K. We use one through eight. So again, hopefully you remember where the chart, what it looked like. This one is really, really promising here. We have these, all of the students in kindergarten, excuse me, from grade one through grade five at the elementary level are showing above that 50% for that percent of typical growth meant. And again, we're seeing promising gains for the stretch growth as well. And again, that stretch growth reminder is, is where we want them to, to show that growth, so they can work towards becoming on grade level. So what we're going to do is move into some of the tutoring programs, and we're going to share a little more data as, as well with that, too, so we can show you how these, how these were impacting student growth. Melissa?
So we've implemented a lot, a number of different programs and extended learning opportunities for students. We really challenge school teams to look at their individual schools, their school community, and their student data, and to do what makes sense and what will work best for their students. And so we've just highlighted a few things that were going on. This is in no way a comprehensive list. But for reading and math, we had small group instruction going on, both during the school day and after school as well, during tutoring sessions. We used in-person tutors when available and if possible. But we also contracted with a few vendors to provide some virtual tutoring as well. So we're not replacing that core first instruction. Even though we've improved a lot of the first instruction, we're really just supplementing, using evidence-based interventions, what's going on in the classroom during that core instruction. We also have a number of social-emotional learning programs and academic-integrated programs. And so you'll see on this list, there's all kinds of things going on. We had dance teams meeting or spirit squads. We had yoga being taught to students, and breathing techniques, and how to really work through situations that they're uncomfortable in. But along with that, we paired those academic interventions as well. So it wasn't just the SEL activities, but students were also working with tutors on, you know, where their deficits were falling in both reading and math. We had a Black History Club going on at one of our schools with reading and writing components. I talked about the Spirit Squad, and that was really focused on motivating students to attend school. So the, the goal for that group was really to improve school attendance, but they also worked on academic support as well. And then a number of our schools were pairing students with mentors from our community, and we partnered with various community organizations for that. What we've found is that the high dosage tutoring really has an impact on student achievement. And so if students participate in 15 or more sessions with the same tutor across a, a short period of time, then they're going to make more gains. And so schools were really challenged with, do we do that after school? Are students going to stay after school? Or in our community, is that not going to work? And do we need to embed it during the school day? And so different schools did different things, depending on what would work best for them.
Okay, so what we did was we took data for those particular ELO opportunities that targeted either math or reading, and then we looked at how the impact was for virtual and for in-person tutoring. So if you look across the bottom, you'll see that we're looking at, the blue is So if you look across the bottom, you'll see that we're looking at, the blue is ELA, I-ready results, and the orange is the math ready, I-ready results. So bear with me, I'll explain what this all means because it looks confusing, I'm sure, in the beginning. So remember, I was talking about the typical growth, the percent of typical growth attained. So again, a student that meets their typical growth, they've met 100% of their typical growth. So we want, we would like to see students, if they're going to work towards stretch growth, they're going to have that number be above the 100%. So when we're looking at these, this is the median student. So of all the students that participated in these particular programs, we took the median student, the middle student. So that means that student and everybody above them, 50% of them scored at least that number that's showing there. So for instance, on this first one, this is the students that participated in a virtual AMP reading tutoring program at the elementary levels, grades one through five. And the median typical growth for those students was 128. So they were above that 100%, so they're working towards that stretch growth. So what we did was we looked at this again, the first group is virtual reading, the next group is virtual math, the next group is in-person math, then reading in-person. And then you'll look over to the right, and well, why is he showing both of these here? Well, this was a group of students that had both an in-person math and reading tutoring. So we separated those students out so we could see if having both programs had an impact on both of them. So you could see across here at the great, at the elementary level, we really saw in the blue, we saw a lot of students in these programs making an impact with their growth towards, their typical growth gains. So all of them well above the 100%, so they're definitely working towards that stretch growth piece.
Amplify and FEV were the two tutoring companies that we worked with. They provided the virtual tutoring for our students. So Amplify is just at the elementary level and is reading only. FEV does both math and reading, so you'll see that in the secondary, but for elementary, it was just math.
Can I just add that part of the reason we do this analysis with I-ready data is to be able to then make decisions about what we continue and what we think works best with students. So that, you know, if you could put a, if you could put a line across the 100, anybody who is right close to it or higher is what we want to be able to see.
Now, we're going to be able to, at our office, take a look at all these programs. And we can identify students that made these gains, we can figure out what schools made these gains, if there's a particular program, if it's a teacher, if it's a certain school, whatever, however, they formatted their tutoring program, and we can really dissect it and figure out what works best, and then share it with the other schools and seeing what they're doing, how it's making the impact. So this is where we can really utilize this data. And over the summer, we're going to be able to dig in and find out exactly what's working, what's going to need to change, what's going to be able to be twisted in turn, so it really helps everybody. So we're excited about what we can do with the results here now that we have it. So this is a very similar chart using grade six through eight. So again, in-person, that's math and reading after school, virtual math and reading after school. Then we had in-person ELA after school, virtual ELA after school, and then virtual math. So at the middle school levels, we saw a lot of growth in the math department here in terms of the growth. I mean, that group, that virtual math and reading, that one group there, 179, I mean, they're making huge gains. And if you remember the charts that we were seeing for those sixth and seventh graders and those eighth graders, it really had an impact at that math. So we can see that these gains are evident with this as well. So then this was specific Title I, this is federally funded tutoring that we had. So these are funds that were used from either Title I or McKinney-Vento. And similarly, we're looking across the bottom, there was in-person programs and virtual programs, whether it was math, reading, or math and reading both, or math and reading for virtual. And then the last group on the right was a special tutoring program that we had, where we had McKinney-Vento students that were, attended Huntington Learning Center for additional tutoring as well. So, and that was for math and for reading, and you can see where the gains were for each of those. So the last two, oh, no, we have one more here, I'm sorry.
So at the high school level, we have a number of different programs going on. Obviously, there's a ton of CTE programs and different pathways for students to take. And so sometimes that requires very specific and tailored tutoring. So this is just a sample of some of the things that were going on. At North Point High School, our Academy of Health professions students, they ran a tutoring program for those students. We had Algebra I tutoring going on in a number of our high schools using FEV, our virtual tutoring company. We had an AP Academy at a couple of our schools where they focused on specific AP courses. And one school was actually prepping students who were going into AP for the first time the next school year. There was a cosmetology group working after school to help students really achieve the number of hours that they need to complete to successfully attain their certification. We had English tutoring going on virtually. Math Honor Society at one of our schools, they were peer tutoring. So their students who are members of the Math Honor Society were staying after school and working with tutors, or working with students during that time. Virtual tutoring was going on, SAT after school, in-person was happening at one of the schools. And then we had some specific science and social studies tutoring, depending on what course those students were in and whether or not there was an assessment tied to it.
Now, to show growth on this was very difficult because of a couple of different things. One, we don't have all of our grade levels at the high school level and taking the I-ready assessment, so we can't use it in that sense. And we also, if they do have I-ready, we don't have the typical growth piece. That element is not attached to the I-ready growth. So that's one of the things that we wanted to look at closely, is how can we measure the effectiveness of each of these programs and what kind of outcomes we can use to measure to see what kind of success we're seeing with our students.
It's also, I think it's important to note that it's not a large number of students. It's the first time that we've done this in a lot of our schools, these specific kinds of programs. And it's challenging to get high school students to stay after school for more school.
And to get people to assist to help that process.
So some of our schools have been very creative and have really awesome plans for next year. Some of them are even looking at embedding these tutoring options during the school day. And so we have the one-hour lunch, and we have activity period and times like that. But they're also looking at embedding some of these opportunities during the regular school day outside of that one-hour lunch and activity period. So it's exciting to see what they come up with next year.
All right, so then the last two slides, as I was going to say earlier, these are the two pieces, two slides that are going to talk about the My Path program. So inside of I-Ready, there's an additional add-on that we utilize for reading for grades one through five and for math for six through eight. So students, what it does is it takes their diagnostic and then it determines a path of instruction for the students that they can use and get additional help. And the goal was for them to get 30-plus minutes per week on these, each week, working on the My Path program. And then they have different lessons, and then they have an assessment at the end of the lesson to see how well they were able to comprehend and be able to succeed with each of those. So you could see on this how many, what the average number of minutes was for each of the different students, and then what the average percent of lessons passed were that they actually participated. Some of them are just the pathway that's there, some of them are ones that are assigned by the teacher, so on and so forth. So what we have found here is, again, going back to that typical growth, students that participated at the elementary level that had 30-plus minutes per week on average and had a 70% lessons passed, their median typical growth was 131%, which we could see that My Path was having an impact on those students. But even more profound is, take a look at what it did at the middle school level. 164% for that same category of those students with 30-plus minutes. And that's, we were seeing that at those sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, those math gains. So what we're going to be looking at is how this was implemented, again, with each of these schools. What was the success, how was it done? How was each of the schools, how was each of the teachers, so on and so forth, doing each of these My Path implementations? And then what kind of success they had, and then how we can share that out and make sure that it's being used across the district.
I think it's important to note that this was the first year that we used My Path at the elementary level, and we didn't start at the beginning of the year, we started later into the school year. But this is the second year that we've used My Path at the middle school level. So I think that probably has something to do with the results we're seeing.
Yeah, and I'll just add that I have two customers at the sixth grade level. And while they are not thrilled at using My Path, when I mention My Path, this to me is a clear actionable data point for the school system. I feel like when we looked at it from statistical significance of how many, 164% typical growth, you know, we're talking about accelerate learning because you can't just have typical growth at this point after the pandemic. You almost have to have.
Stretch growth.
A stretch growth to be able to make up these deficits. And we need to continue into that. So that is, I just thought, I wanted those slides to come out because that's a huge learning for us. And like we said, we're going to go back and figure out, you know, specifically how to give guidance to every single school and to figure out the models that work best because this is aggregate data. But this is an important, like, actionable step based on our student data about what needs to continue for them. Even though my two rising seventh graders are not going to be thrilled about it, My Path clearly has impact on the middle schools, getting those concepts and working through those concepts and practicing that math to get them to stay on grade level access.
So we're ready to take some questions on the I-Ready data and the tutoring data before we move on to Kim and their reading.
All right, any questions? Who wants to start? You want to start? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Butler-Washington.
Yes, great presentation, thank you. I have two questions. My first one was, I'm glad you have added yoga into your SEL because we know that's a great way to calm our students down to receive instruction. So that's approval, so thank you for that. And my second question is, how do you determine which Title I student is to get, go to tutoring from Huntington or McKinley?
It was set specifically for McKinney-Vento, so it was a program through the McKinney-Vento, the office, I guess through Bethany Goodwin, who was our Youth and Transition Coordinator.
So it was specifically for students in the elementary school who were not meeting grade level expectation and who were homeless.
Okay, all right. All right, Ms. Smith?
Just to clarify, so one, thank you for your questions, Ms. Butler-Washington. About the McKinney-Vento students, were they also Title I students or were those two separate categories?
There was two separate categories there, they may have been, but no, I'm not exactly sure, I'll have to find out for sure.
Just curious, for your Title I students, were those, like, was this a school-wide program where, like, all of the students were targeted? Or was it just specifically students qualified for Title I services?
It was, it was programs that were at schools that were Title I schools. So each of the school had their own submission as to how they were going to utilize their tutoring programs.
Great, and I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Thank you so much for this presentation. I think this is something we've been waiting for, for a while, so definitely appreciate the superintendent bringing it forward. I know our communities have been hungry for this data. A lot of the data we're looking at is, of course, lagging data, so we're looking at last year's data. So definitely excited to see the growth, not only in reading, but also mathematics. Thank you for bringing forward the extended services that you all have offered to ensure that our students were able to make these, this leap. We still have a long way to go, that's, you know, undeniable. But I think the growth that we've made thus far definitely should be commended. So a few questions that I had were around the targeted supports to students who were three to two grade levels below. Was there like a secret sauce? I know that's not the term we probably should use, but just seeing the growth we were able to make. You noted that we were able to look across different schools and figure out who was doing what. So just curious if there was something specific that was happening in one area that we'd like to replicate in another.
I think we saw a number of programs that were really successful. The virtual tutoring is very successful when students participate in 15 or more sessions. And so we noticed that right away. And that follows research and everything that everyone is talking about right now with tutoring. It has to be high dosage. And so students need to participate consistently with the same tutor working on their skill deficits as identified by their I-ready scores. And so we've seen that work really well when implemented with fidelity. So students are constantly participating in the sessions. Especially at the secondary level, it's really hard to get students to stay all the time, as I mentioned before. And so, you know, we would start the school year with 300 and some students in the program, and by the end of the school year, we'd have maybe 20 still hanging on and participating. And so that's been a struggle. And like I said, schools are really working to kind of try and implement these opportunities for students during the school day so that, you know, they're a captive audience, they're there, and able to participate. So that was one lesson that we learned early on. I think you'll, oh, I'm sorry. I think you'll see some of the things in my presentation of some of the things that we're doing to help those struggling students also. So that will, I think that will answer some of your questions as well. Because it's not all tutoring, but it's stuff we're doing inside the classroom as well.
Great, and I'd love to get to that as well. So I'll hold some of the questions that I have for that part of the presentation. I have about three or four others. Speaking from a parent's perspective, because I too have three customers in the system, all in middle school. So I'm curious if, does I-ready score, so one, what are the parent supports that we offer to help parents understand? Because while my child comes home with their, this is my fall score, look at the growth that I've made in spring, like, look at all, and it's wonderful to see, but I don't necessarily know, like, in terms of breaking down, like, the components of reading, are you struggling with literacy, are you struggling with informational text, are you struggling? And then being able to have a conversation with their teacher to say, what can I do to help you improve my kid's scores overall? Like, so can you explain sort of what supports parents are offered?
Sure. So the one thing that we do first and foremost is the parent evening, the parent information evening. So after we give out those I-ready reports, we invited parents to meet virtually so that we could kind of go through the scores, what they mean, what supports are out there, and who to contact if they had questions about how their student was doing.
We post additional videos and such, resources from I-Ready that kind of targets that as well. So, and those videos are on the webpage available for students to be able, parents and students to be able to see.
And we time that so that when that first fall report's going out to parents, that's about the time that we schedule that parent night. So as they're getting that first report, they have their students' actual data to refer to as they're listening to that information on the presentation.
And in terms of supports that are offered to students who are either behind, where they fall in the sort of rating or the rating, is class placement determined by I-ready scores? Like, if you have a student who's two or three grade levels behind, will that determine sort of what their class placement is for the next school year or the next quarter? Does that?
So it is used as one data point. We never want to place a student in a class just based on one test. And so it is used as one point to look at. And when we give guidance to teachers on whether or not to place students into, speaking about secondary specifically, an honors course or an on-grade level course, then an I-ready score is one of the data points that we ask teachers to really look at and see if that's an appropriate placement for students.
You mentioned that the I-ready only goes up to the ninth grade. What is the comparable test, 10, 11, 12, so we're able to track whether or not we're still seeing successes and gains? Or whether we're seeing some slippage? Like, how do we know, like, the kids who are intense and on are still on that positive trajectory?
At the 10th grade level, we administer the MCAP, like we discussed last, I guess earlier this month at the District Committee for Assessment. One of the tests we do at the 10th grade level is the English II assessment from the state. And then we also have the algebra assessment that needs to be taken. So some students take that in ninth grade, some students take that in 10th grade. Depending, for the math data, it says algebra. So whenever they actually take the algebra course is when they take that, which for the most part, at the high school level, is ninth grade, if they haven't already taken it at the middle school level. So if they did take the, a middle school algebra test, then when they move into the high school, they'll take the geometry test and, or quite possibly the Algebra II test. So right now, we have students that took the Algebra I test in eighth grade. Then in the fall, they took the Algebra II test because the federal government requires us to test a student at mathematics one time at the high school level.
Okay, all right. Just two other questions, and I will yield to my colleagues, I'm so sorry. I love this, this is, I love this space. This is sort of what we've been trying to get at, so if you allow me some grace. In terms of the national I-ready scores, you mentioned that there, it's not clear how many states are using this tool. So are we looking at two or three states, are we looking at like 13 to 14 states? Like, who are we comparing ourselves to?
I can get that data for you, but it has the number of students that are assessed, but I don't have that in front of me. I can find out how many actual states are participating. And I can do the same thing for counties in Maryland too, we'll get that to you.
You mentioned that CCPS is able to break down the data across schools. I sort of mentioned this a little earlier in my comments, looking for where there are pockets of success that are taking place. Do principals have that same breakdown where they can look at classrooms and getting a sense of, okay?
Yes, and they can look, they can break it down, they can see students, each teacher can see of those five different colors that we have. It'll separate the students in each of those groups, so the teacher can do that within their own classroom. The school can do it by grade, they can do it by the entire school, however, and then there's instruction. However, and then there's instruction that's embedded inside of iReady that allows them to focus what the needs are for each of those students based on their proficiency level, whether they're two grade levels below, one, you know, they're the yellow, green, wherever they are. And it targets where they are. So it's really helpful in that sense.
And my final question, I'm not sure, Dr. Navarro, if this is more so for you or for the team. And thinking about strategies of getting the information out to the public, like, I know we have masses who are watching us virtually. But in terms of getting this information into the hands of parents and helping them understand where we as a county have made growth, but again, where we as a county still have some areas of challenge or areas of opportunity where they can help and support. Are there strategies that you would recommend for, like, the fellow board members to either take up or either for your staff to take up to ensure we get the information out to parents in the community?
Yeah, so I think this presentation, actually, we'll be talking about it also when we return to school. And we'll be honing in on a strategy of talking points and providing the board members, obviously principals and teachers, easy ways where you as a, as a parent can type into our website, iReady. And you actually go to a video that explains to you how to read, both in English and in Spanish, how to read the reports when they come in. It has to be embedded in the culture. So all of the people that we have working with parent engagement, there are queue questions that, that we can send to parents to ask as a result of getting the iReady, as we tend to do with other data indicators. The, the important information that I see in terms of this starting to take root. Remember, this is only the second year that we've used diagnostic assessments. We did not have diagnostic assessments before that were nationally normed. And it's the root of kids talking about it. Because there is no accountability for you to get an iReady score to pass to the grade level. So we have to do, in, 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 oh my goodness, now I'm having issues like you guys. Motivation to say to elementary, middle, or 9th grader, hey, this test counts absolutely for nothing for you except for, to help us figure out how you learn and get excited about it. And I think, I do want to say, being the second year, closing out the school year, I really want to commend our staff, who really are the soldiers in this work, who I have heard from a lot of kids that understand and know what their iReady score and can talk about it. And that then means that they go home and they say, Mom, this is what I got on my iReady, or Dad, here's what, you know. So we've got to make it part of the culture of the, of the communities that we talk about it. So in the state of the schools, in August, I'm going to go a little bit deeper on what is the homework? If you're a teacher, if you're an administrator, if you're a parent engagement person, if you're a board member, if you're a superintendent, if you're a district, how do we get everybody to understand why we should look at this data? And especially because students get it immediately and so do teachers. And so, you know, and so it's actionable data. This is, this is after the fact and this is a, an analysis that's also important. But that accessibility that they have means that they can make corrections the very next day that a student, and can make plans the very next day that a student takes the assessment. So we're going to continue to work at it.
Definitely appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Kramer?
Just wanted to make sure. No, I know you can. I know you can. No, thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith actually has some of the questions that I had, so that's good. I wanted to thank you all as well for providing this information, just to echo Ms. Smith's sentiments because I know as a parent as well, and a lot of parents, really, we're looking for this data because it's a new tool that we've been using. But, you know, I do appreciate, and I was really excited when we brought iReady on as a parent because I like the almost instant data that you receive. Because if you've heard me talk before about testing and assessments, MCAP is like a thorn in my side because I'm like, this is data from last year. I don't really know how this is going to help me. But I love reading the iReady reports and, you know, how it breaks down the categories, whether it's reading or math, you know. In math, I can see, you know, my son's testing, you know, fractions and decimals. And, you know, I can see what areas he did well and what areas he's struggling. And then the same for reading, you know, fluency or comprehension or whatever it is. And then I love that, you know, on the reading one at least, I know there's recommendations for books for your child to read. And so I just feel like this is a really great assessment, probably my favorite of all, if there, if there would be a favorite assessment, you know. Because of the availability of data that it provides and the support to parents. I just want to reiterate that and also for the benefit of the public to remember, you know, that those, those reports do come home three times a year. And, you know, I know it's new, but to really be looking for that. And I know we talked previously in another conversation about perhaps having the reports available in ParentView, you know, so that it could be even more accessible. Maybe your kid lost it on the bus or something like that. Exactly, you know, it gets ripped up in your backpack. But just to make sure that parents are looking for that information, fall, winter, and spring, because it's really, really valuable data. And then also just want to point out for the benefit of the public that I hear a lot of the words that you use when we're reporting on data is growth. And so, you know, just want to point out that the focus is growth, not necessarily where we are at any particular given point. Because of course, this is a point-in-time survey, right, sort of, you know, point-in-time assessment. And so as long as we're seeing growth, that's like the ultimate goal. And so to Ms. Smith's point that we do have a lot more, you know, growth to, 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 to do, that, you know, the fact that we're seeing the growth that we are, you know, in most areas. And I know reading, I was so surprised when I read the reading, to see that reading was actually sort of light years ahead of the math growth that we had made, but happy to see that. Because, you know, the, the thought process is that literacy is, you know, really lagging. And, you know, a lot of kids are struggling with reading and comprehension. And so to see that growth was just super important for me as a parent. But I did have, so that's the end of my comments. So thank you all for that. But I did have a question about when you have isolated areas, I guess. So, for example, on the growth charts, I notice on math, you have like grades three to five, sort of were like in a lull in the middle, right? They were like the lowest growth areas. And then reading, I think it was the, it was six through eight, had the lowest growth. So when you see areas like that where the growth is sort of inconsistent or there are certain areas where growth is significantly lower perhaps than other grades or areas, are there targeted approaches to that? Or how do we use that data to inform, you know, further instruction or supports for those grades? If we see, hey, third grade is scoring the lowest, you know, in terms of growth in reading? What, what happens from there?
So what we do, I know six through eighth have data dives. So they have consultants from iReady that come and work with different teams and really look at the data. Where, where are the weaknesses falling? And then they come up with their own action plan. So that has been really helpful. I've spoken with my colleagues, John Tompkins, in middle school. And he said that is very helpful when they come and do that with the teachers, not just with the administration, but the teachers really dive into that data. For math, I know that the instructional resource teachers also do those data dives with the teachers. And look, where are those groups of kids? How are we going to target them? What kind of instruction are we going to give them? So that they really look into it and dive deep and try to make some action plans according to what students and what deficits, is it fractions? Is it geometry? You know, what are their deficits?
Right, great.
We do the same for reading, too.
Love that. That's what I was looking for. Thank you so much.
One of the reports that's available in iReady for the teachers is called the Instructional Grouping Report, where it actually looks at the students' results and it puts them into five different groups. And then based on how the students score, it gives suggestions for lessons and skills that teachers can work on. So it is very specific.
Love that.
So specifically in those lab classes at the middle school level that we just started, that's what teachers, that's where they're coming up with, okay, what am I working with this small group on? Well, I'm going to that report. I'm looking at what, where my students' deficits are. And then I'm pulling that group of students and I'm working with them during that lab time.
Love that. Thank you all so much for that information.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Anyone else? Mr. Lucas, do you have any questions?
I do. Hey, everybody. How are you? Just a quick question. It might be for Dr. Navarro. I read the other day, magazine today. And we talk about the challenges, both in people and in resources for things like tutoring. But did the State Department of Education come out with something, I think it was called Maryland Tutoring Core Program? Does that ring a bell? Is that something that we might be able to leverage?
Yeah, so the governor put forward the Maryland Tutoring Core that is trying to build a core of people to volunteer and to actually work to tutor and support. And there is a state grant that the Maryland State Department just put out there. We're reviewing right now, too, to expand and continue tutoring services. And so our biggest issue, honestly, is, is people first. Finding the time for our teachers or our staff, our IAs, or people outside of the school system to work as tutors for us. And then second, obviously, is, is oddly enough, not necessarily the funding to be able to do these programs. One of the things that we did this summer, as you know, is we, we are encouraging students also and families to access tutoring all year round. So one of the big plugs that I want to say is when you, and I'm going to send a message. I was giving kids until July, until I was going to remind parents again that there are multiple ways in which students can access our programs. The MyPath with the mathematical, with the mathematics practices. Kids log in and they pick up where they left off during the summer. It's good on a rainy day, a couple times this summer, to just plug into math after you're playing baseball, after you're swimming and everything else. The mind has to continue. And so we are trying to get out to families during the summer and just remind them that in many devices, students can access all of this this summer. And so we want to create a culture that learning happens all year long for young minds. And it's very easy to create these adaptability programs that follow the, where your student left off at the end of the year and continue their trajectory through summer, through spring break, through evenings, weekends. And I just want to put out a call to our families to work alongside with us because we have so many resources. And we just want to make sure that the full potential of our students is realized. And that also comes in with some practice and supports. And tutoring is definitely a great option.
I appreciate the response. And I echo the comments of my fellow board members. I think the gains are very noteworthy. You know, a year ago, we were, we were lagging in a lot of areas compared to the state. And now we're not just on par, but we're exceeding in some areas. So it's testament that everybody's part of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Any other comments, questions? I just had a couple of quick things. I believe it was Ms. Smith that touched on the factors that contribute to growth. And one of them being the consistency with the tutors, I think you said over 15 sessions. Have you identified any areas that may present challenges to growth, some things that may be less effective?
I think the biggest challenge is really just getting students to participate. So, you know, the after-school, there are so many things that can consume a student's time. We know that as parents because we are the Uber that runs them back and forth to all of those events, if you're like me. But, so, so finding ways to embed it into the school day. We have a relatively new math curriculum with a luscious amount of math. And we're continuing to add courses now at the high school level each year. And so teachers have to really get a handle on that and figure out how to get through that first instruction in the best possible way to reach all students so that, you know, we can reduce the number of tutoring sessions that we need, obviously. But finding time during the day, that's, that's probably, I would say, the biggest challenge.
I was encouraged, made no secret, I'm a virtual learning lover. I understand it doesn't work for everyone, but I was encouraged by the percentages and the numbers. Just curious, what do the ratios look like for virtual learning compared to in-class? Are they generally much smaller? Do you think that might be why, you know, there is so much growth? Or is it maybe just generally the learning style of the student? Any idea?
I think it depends on the learning style for the student. Some, some students just did not do well virtually, but this isn't like pandemic teaching, virtual instruction. This is very targeted and the student has the same tutor the entire time that they're a part of the program. So if we can get the student to log in and participate for one or two sessions, then they're usually hooked. What we do is, I think at the elementary, if we do it after school, but also during the school day even. But at the secondary level is we, we have somebody supervising the students, really helping them with any technology issues that they may have. But then they're on with that same tutor that they'll see every week, several times a week, depending on, you know, how the program is set up at their school.
So it's, it's all individual, then? There's no group tutoring?
So there are groups in some cases. Some of the schools paired students in groups of three or less. But most of the tutoring that we've done virtually has been individual. What's Amplify? Amplify is a small group. It's a small group, less than four. So it's four or less, very small group. And we try to keep it as small in-person as well. But it's not one-on-one for Amplify.
Okay, thank you. I had a question. It was from slide 31. When you talked about successful completion of the tutoring program, how is that defined? Is that literally just getting through the program? Is it a certain percentage increase? Like, how do you define if they successfully complete?
Depending on each of the program, what their criteria was. So one program may have had eight sessions, one program may have had 15 sessions, another program may have had 20 sessions. So it is if they participated in all of the sessions that were defined by the school, how they set up their program.
Okay, but it's not necessarily improvement from the first session? It's just literally completing the program?
Completing the program.
Understood. Okay. All right, that question was asked. Oh, I wanted to mention, this is more of a comment than a question. I'm very encouraged by the reading growth because obviously it's the foundation for everything, including for math and a lot of the math problems. Speaking as a parent of, well, now two customers, because one customer graduated out. The middle customer struggled a lot until he really improved his reading proficiency and the math score shot up as well. So that is very, very encouraging. Yeah, we saw a lot of that. A suggestion, and I don't know, I love to see the data, but I'm not necessarily the person that can transcribe the data. It's not my ministry. But when we posted on CCBOE, is there a way to maybe simplify it? Maybe we could have all of this, but then maybe in a couple of sentences explaining that, you know, from fall to winter, we had X percent, you know what I mean? Something that, so I could just quickly, as a parent, look in and say, okay, this, we're moving in the right direction, understanding, yes, we do have, you know, some ways to go. But it's encouraging, especially coming out of the pandemic, to see that we are moving forward, yes, upward. And then also, and I think I asked this question at the last meeting, how are the, the results explained to the students? I'm hoping that for some of them, it can be motivation to see that, you know, I was throwing out letters. I was at reading level, whatever, D, and now I'm at an M. But do they have those conversations with the customers to explain what that looks like?
So yes, we encourage teachers to do that as much as possible because when students are invested in their own progress, they're going to put forth more effort. And I know with my own customer, a 7th grader, boy, it's a struggle, right? So, you know, sometimes iReady takes more than one class period. And so, why am I on this for so long and I have to go back and do it again? And so really explaining their growth so that when they come home the next time, they're like, I made my stretch growth or I made my growth, and they're talking that language. I think Dr. Navarro said that. So the kids are speaking the language now. And yes, when we do those data dives with teachers, you know, we're really encouraging them to sit down with their students and have that conversation with each individual student. Yeah, and that's the same in elementary. We do goal setting with them. The teachers sit down and talk about their goals and where they think, and they show them, you know, this, this is your stretch goal. This is your typical growth, you know, and they, they are getting excited about it.
And that will help eliminate some of the resistance.
I think so. I think so.
Yeah, that's awesome.
We've also provided PowerPoints that the teachers can use before the students take the assessment to explain what is this assessment, why am I taking it, why is it important? Why do I need to even try and do my best on this? So the students know going into it how this can affect maybe their MyPath or what's going on in their classroom.
And every time we have any type of presentation, we're talking about iReady, whether it's to teachers, students, administrators, we encourage wholeheartedly, please do your best every time because we don't get a true grasp of how you're doing if you don't try your best. So we need to, we need you to try your best every time because it's going to really tell us what we need to do to help you get better. So it's, it's important.
Fantastic. All right, well, thank you all so much. This was very, very informative. We appreciate you. Thank you. Fantastic. All right, well, thank you all so much. This was very, very informative. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Now we can talk about the reading program, which is my favorite thing to talk about. Our core program that we're using pre-K is Connect for Learning. K to five, we're using something called Into Reading. And it has all of the components, all the big five, fluency, vocabulary, phonics, phonological awareness, and comprehension. We adopted this program 1920. Remember what happened in '20? It was perfect. It was a perfect program to adopt those years because it had so many online components. It was almost seamless to go to virtual now. Of course, we had some growing pains, but it really helped us during that time. It's also very highly rated in EdReports. And Ed Reports is an individual company that rates all reading programs. They are not funded by any reading company. They are independent. And so it was nice to see that the reading program that we picked was highly rated in all areas on Ed Reports. They, Ed Reports rates it K to five, not pre-K, but our pre-K is also on the approved MSD list for core programs. One of our, my big focus for next year is strengthening the core. We talk about this tutoring that we have, and we talk about pulling kids out. I want the tutors to go out of business. I want to be able to provide everything they need right there in that core program. We need to strengthen our core, which just means we need to fine tune what we're doing. We need to build up that capacity for teachers, and we're doing that in many ways. And I'm getting ready to show you what we're doing. All of the things are aligning with Science of Reading right now. Our, in the core program, they have the foundational skills with phonological awareness and phonics. It is systematic explicit instruction from K to five. We have had the opportunity, due to the LEEDs grant, to supplement a lot of things that we are doing for our core. We are using decodables now, which I think attributes to that growth in that small group instruction, what Ms. Smith was talking about. You know, how are we targeting those students that aren't able to decode? We've now put in decodables. We have used some of the money for LEEDs for high-quality instructional materials, which I think when we think about Science of Reading, we think about those foundational skills and building those foundational skills, but it's also that comprehension in grades three through five. So what we did was we looked at our MCAT, or, yeah, oh, no, our PRC data, not MCAT yet, our PRC data, and we looked at where are those standards that we're falling short? Where are those standards that we need some supplemental materials? And we purchased some of those for teachers, for those students that are falling two and three grade levels behind. We are doing letters training. I don't know if you've heard of this, but it's Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And it is a very intense training that teachers are going through. There are eight modules, and I finished my last one today. And it really helps teachers to identify why kids are having problems in phonological awareness. Why are they having problems in vocabulary? How can we help them become better writers? And so that's all part of that strengthening the core. And then what we worked on this summer is my colleague Beth Sorsby, who's the Early Childhood Specialist, and I have this vision of we want a literacy guide where everything is at their fingertips. What do I do if a student is having issues with phonics? What are some activities I can do? What are some activities I can do if they're struggling with informational text or literary text or writing? And so right now, we're working on that literacy guide for teachers. I wanted to just give you a little bit of an overview of the reading block. In every grade level, they have a 120-minute reading block, and it's broken up into two chunks. The first chunk is called the Integrated Literacy Block. And that's where they're doing their foundational skills, their shared reading, which is on-grade level text, and their writing. It looks like it's a 20-20-20, but if you're doing a really good writing, you can lengthen that time. Or if your kids need more foundational skills, you lengthen that time. What I do say is you don't lengthen it where you skip something every day, but you meet the needs of your kids there. And then we have small group instruction where we're targeting those skills that we're seeing the deficits. So that's when those I-ready scores, if we have those group, using that grouping that Karen was talking about, if we have those kids that need short vowels, that's when we're focusing on that. If we have kids that need prefixes or suffixes, if we have kids that are above and beyond, because we have a lot of kids that are accelerated, we're working on that small group there, too. So the whole group is more of the on-grade level, and then the small group is where we are meeting those kids' needs. We, they are flexible groups. We are doing, using decodables. We are recursive teaching during that time. And we are looking at those strategies and standards that they need. Now, we are strengthening our core, but we know we still have supplemental instruction that we need to do for our students that aren't reaching where we need them to be. So we have lots of things in place for them, lots of interventions. We use Hegarty and Bridge the Gap for our phonological awareness. We have Foundations for our phonics. Foundations is K to three. Wilson is three to five for our phonics. We use MyPath, which we were talking about earlier, for reading one to five. We have, we're piloting another intervention. Actually, we finished piloting it. It's called Benchmark Intervention, and that's another phonics intervention. Because we have one Wilson, well, we have two, Wilson and Foundations, but sometimes that doesn't work. So we need another option. And then for our small group of students that have comprehension issues, we're using Level Literacy Intervention. And we know that most of our kids, most of our students, the issue really is decoding when we dig deep. So we need to get that under control. And then we have a lot of professional learning going on. Like we talked about with the letters training, we have cohorts, over 150 teachers have signed up this summer to do letters training, to get them started. I was so impressed. We had to open up a whole nother cohort for them because people kept calling and calling and calling. Then we have, and I apologize, that number's wrong because we had to add more. We have eight cohorts going on throughout the school year for letters. Our goal is to train all teachers pre-K to three by the end of the year. And EL teachers and special educators. And then our summer sessions that we're doing, we're doing a fun with foundational skills, small group instruction, comprehension strategies, Hegarty, Bridge the Gap. Wilson is done three times a year, and Foundations training is done three times a year. So we have lots going on this summer, and we have lots going on throughout the year. Any questions?
Any questions? It's entirely up to you. You're welcome to go first.
Well, one, thank you, not only for the presentation, but also for your enthusiasm in delivering it. I think it's definitely infectious. We are very excited not only to see the numbers overall, but also to hear about the strategies and the curriculum that we're using. So definitely appreciate the presentation. I have a whole sheet or two of notes, just the things that I want to make sure kind of get back to the community. But I know Dr. Navarro is also thinking about kind of what are those communication strategies to make parents aware of not only what we're using and how teachers are presently using the summer to prepare for their kids to return in the fall, but also what are some strategies that parents have available to them to use over the summer? So I don't want to step on your toes, Dr. Navarro, but I did want to ask. I know that you're putting something together for, like, they can use MyPath, and I believe that's more so for like math instruction. No, it's not. So if you could just clarify for me and for the general public, what are some other strategies? Okay, MyPath is for reading?
Yes.
My Path is reading, MyPath right now, although there might be additions to this, previews. My Path is reading for K to five and math six through eight. Part of the reason we analyzed some scores was to make decisions about whether we are going to expand MyPath reading into middle schools. Says apparently the growth in our middle schools was high mathematics, still needs some, and vice versa also.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you. Definitely appreciate that. My, well, my second question was, only have two questions. I know, I know. I'm holding myself back. I'm restraining myself. But I did want to ask about professional learning.
Sure.
Micro credentials. Is there an opportunity for professionals to get some type of micro credentialing in kind of the literacy reading space?
I'm not quite sure what a micro credential is, I'm sorry.
So it's an opportunity for additional credentials in some short-term, smaller components of learning that teachers are able to get, that kind of add to their certification, add to their professional learning standards, things that they can add to their resume essentially?
Well, yes.
Did I say that right, Dr. Navarro?
Yes, and they can also be tied, in some districts, micro credentialing can also be tied to salaries and positions.
I'm not sure about the salary, but MSD is offering credits for teachers that take the letters training and complete the online coursework. So they will get, towards certification, they will get credits when they complete the letters training, if they do the online coursework as well. Did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am, it did. One last comment before I yield to my colleagues. Definitely appreciate that all teachers are being trained, and I especially appreciate that you're also focusing on our dual-language, or teachers of dual-language learners, as well as our special education community, recognizing that there are not three fragmented communities, we're really all one. We have general education teachers that are also teaching dual-language learners, as well as special education students who are in general education. So just ensuring that we're having an opportunity for all of our educators to learn from one another so that we can have common practices across. So appreciate that pitch.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you all, and I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank you all again and definitely love, I echo Ms. Smith's sentiments again, your enthusiasm was just, you were making me excited by looking at you. Yeah, it's like reading.
You should see her in the classroom when she goes into substitutes classes. She's very mellow tonight.
I know. I was going to say, let's do this.
Yes, like, how can you not be excited about reading? You know, listening to you talk about, you know, all the supports we have and the supports that we're providing, not only to students but teachers, I think is just really important. Again, for me as a parent and as, you know, for the public, you know, for our parents of our students, to know, it's not just a one-size-fits-all, right? And I just really appreciate you even talking about a new pilot program and that I appreciate that we're looking at, you know, constantly looking at different programs and different supports, recognizing that if this doesn't work or that doesn't work, we're going to keep going till we find something that works for every student. You know, so we have every student covered because that just, to me, as a parent, shows the commitment and dedication that our school system has, you know, for our students' success. So just wanted to say that, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Mr. Lucas, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, no problem. Anyone else? All right, thank you all so much. So now we're going to prepare for the swearing-in of our new student board member. Before we do that, we have to properly thank our outgoing student board member. We're going to miss you. Ms. Vella Washington, would you like to start? And everyone could just share some reflections?
Yes. Well, Amira has been my roommate here for the longest.
The roommate.
Chit-chat here lately, but as you know, she has always been a smart, intelligent young lady, and I have always admired her as a student board member. But most of all, I know she's a young lady who's going to go to University of Maryland and make us very proud. And I am so proud of you.
Thank you. Dr. Navarro?
You know, Amira is a thoughtful young person. I find her to be engaging of her peers and just really epitomizes what student leadership is all about. I'm excited to see what you will do. But I'm also just very privileged to have known a great student of ours and a great example of the type of graduates that we produce, and her core is solid. And so I'm just excited to have been able to spend a year with her. And as every other teenager, never responds to my texts, so I can't keep up. Only when she wants to will she ever respond to my texts. But I wish you the very best, and it's been wonderful listening to your positions on a lot of things.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro. Mr. Lucas? Would you like to share some reflections? Yeah, go ahead.
I will. So first off, in a few years on Ms. Boujima, you and I will share the same degree from the same university, so we'll have even more in common. But I just want to say it's been a privilege working with you. And I echo the superintendent's comments, you're very engaged and very tactful in how you approach things, and I really appreciate that. And I wish you all the best, and go Turks.
Thank you. I will go. Ms. Boujima actually went to, was it middle school with my daughter? So I remember when we were at those awards assemblies, and her name got called for everything. I mean, just everything. She's been a rock star since she was probably this big. And having met her family and understanding the kind of people that she comes from, you understand why you have this poised young lady before you. She really is a very, very special person. I'm going to miss you terribly. I feel like you responded to a few more of my texts. I'm totally joking. You hear from them and you hear from them. I mean, my daughter does it to me all the time. So, but we are so proud of you. It was a privilege to work with you. I wish we could have, you know, worked with you a little bit longer, but I understand it's time for you to move on to the next phase. I'm glad you're not going to be too far away, so we're looking forward to hearing many great things. Come back anytime. Feel free to watch with our millions online. But we love you, Amira. It was a pleasure getting to know you.
It's always sad when the student board member leaves. It always is. So Amira is the fourth one that I've had the pleasure of serving with. And prior to the first of the year, I was her neighbor over there, and she was always funny, and we cracked little jokes back and forth. And, you know, you are extremely intelligent, and you've been extremely effective as a student board member. The town halls that you've put together, being a pipeline between us and your constituents, the students, you've done an excellent job at that. You should be very proud of yourself, and we are going to miss you. But thank you, and congratulations in your next step and chapter in life.
I, you know, I agree with everything that everyone has said already. Amira, you have just been a true gem to work with, and I know we connected early on, even, I don't know if it was even before, you know, this board was elected. But, and I, you know, I had watched the meetings and knew, you know, a little bit about you from that, although you are quiet in the meetings at times. But, you know, we've had a lot of candid conversations, and I just appreciate the advocacy work that you've done in representing, you know, the students, and that's what, you know, the student board member is supposed to do, you know? And I think that you leave the school system, you know, a better place than what it was before. And I think that your peers will appreciate, you know, that you listen to them. They trusted you to confide in you. I mean, I listened in on some of your meetings, you know, that you were so gracious to invite me to. And they really do, you know, value your input, and they value, they trust you, and they value, you know, your role as a student board member and that you would bring their voice, you know, to the larger board and represent them. And I think that's been evident in the things that you've done. Like Mr. Hancock mentioned, the student town hall, I felt, I know a lot of us got a ton out of that, you know? I took a lot of notes, you know, and just a lot of mental notes as well of things that students, either ideas or just thoughts that students shared. And that was just really a great experience. And so that, you know, you putting that together was just, I think, great for your student body. So I know you're going to do great at the University of Maryland. I, too, was a University of Maryland student. So I know you're going to be amazing there, and I know that this is not the end, and we'll see you again in a venue like this. So best of luck to you.
So here, here, to all of my fellow board members' comments, I echo their sentiments. You've been absolutely wonderful to work with for the past six months that we've been serving with you for this particular board. I've appreciated your level of maturity. I've appreciated your level of maturity that you've brought to the board from, in your position. I appreciate the deep, heartfelt, and thoughtful responses to many of the policies that we've discussed. Ensuring that you were truly bringing authentic student voice to the table was absolutely helpful. I think it can be scary for young people to come before adults and say, I disagree, and here's why. Or this is how this impacts me, and I need you to be aware of it. But to have that conduit specifically through you, where they had someone who looked like them, spoke like them, was doing the things that they were doing, who they can come to and say, Amira, can you speak on our behalf? And being able to trust you to do so, I think is major. I think back to graduation, everyone knew Amira, nobody knew us. They were like, Amira, we were like her backup dancers. I was like, hello, students? Exactly, Amira was the Beyonce. But I'm definitely excited for your future endeavors. Your future is so very bright. We are so excited for you. Please do respond to texts. I'm sure many of us will follow up just to see how you're doing. And while we will forever be your colleagues, also know that we can also be a resource to you once you leave this board. Anything that you need, hopefully I can speak for everyone. Just reach out, and we'll see what we can do to support. So I don't know if I can help you with your papers. Engineering was not my lane of, that wasn't my gifts. So, but best of luck to you.
I'm going to echo with my colleagues, but you're truly going to be missed. I know you're going to go far, because I just see it in you. I'm really going to miss seeing your smiling face across. Yeah, I'm always looking for you over there, like, hey, who am I looking at? And you're the person I'm always looking at. So you're truly going to miss. And I just know you're just going to go for the stars when you go into college. You're just going to be the head of all the student bodies and everything over there. So congrats, and I can see you going all the way.
Well, everybody said everything, and something about being last now. But, Amira, it was a pleasure working with you. You are definitely an exceptional student. I know you're going to excel greatly at the University of Maryland. Please do keep up the good work, stay in leadership, exercise your voice, as you very much know how to do that. I just want to encourage you in that way, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
I'll say something. First off, I just want to start off and say, I'm a bad texter. I apologize for that.
I think that's a little public shame, though.
I'm sorry, I'll be better. But aside from that, I gave majority of my farewell remarks at the last meeting. So today, I just want to say thank you again to all of you. Thank you for being so easy to talk to, because as a lot of you said, it's not very easy to speak up, being the youngest person in the room, having very many differing opinions, especially since the generational difference is so large. So I appreciate all of you.
That large.
Wait a minute, was that shame?
I apologize. I realize I'm so much younger.
She's mathematically correct, and let's just be honest.
You know, you text, back in my day, we tied a note to a pigeon.
I realized, I realized as I said it, I probably should have picked different wording. I was hoping you guys didn't notice, but next time, give me time to write something. Anyways, no, but really, thank you for being so easy to talk to. And again, thank you to the students, because those are the people that I interacted with the most when I did my school visits, when I went and attended all the Charles County Association of Student Council meetings, a few meetings on the state level, too. Just really, being able to talk to those students, get them to like, a lot of them are very reluctant to tell you their issues, because a lot of them don't know off the top of your head. So you got to dig for it, you know? So my, like, main goal this whole school year was like engaging the student body, getting them to know what the Board of Education does, coming to the Board of Education, giving testimonies, participating in events. And I think this year, we have seen a growth in the amount of student participation, and hopefully in future years, it improves even more. So again, thank you all for being such a cooperative board. Hopefully you guys facilitate a lot more student events in the future, even when I'm not here. So thank you all again.
So now, it is my pleasure to introduce our new incoming student member of the board, officially known as the Smob, Ms. Treasure Perkins. Welcome, Treasure. I will read her bio. Sidebar, I was probably in my twenties before I had a bio. You probably have a resume, too, right? I understand. I understand. Treasure Perkins is a Thomas Stone High School junior and student member of the Board of Education for the 2023-2024 school year. As the student member, Perkins will serve as the voice of the Charles County Public Schools student body. During her term, Perkins plans to focus on school safety and increasing student achievement. She is a member of the National Society of High School Scholars and most recently served as a Thomas Stone High School sophomore class president. She has also attended the Minority Law and Research Institute offered through Southern University Law Center. Through this opportunity, Perkins researched legal information, studied case law, and participated in a mock trial with other student participants. Outstanding. Her participation was sponsored by the Aunt Berth's Kids Education Foundation, based in Prince George's County. Outside of her studies, Perkins enjoys singing, writing, and swimming. You know we're going to test the singing part, right? So I would like to invite up our Clerk of the Circuit Court, Ms. Lisa Yates, to swear Treasure in. Do we need to move at all? Right there, okay.
Welcome, Ms. Yates. Thank you for being here.
How's everyone doing?
Good to see you again. What'd you say? I know, right? Are we still baby board members? I don't know, we're old now.
Is everyone good? Raise your right hand. I state your name. Do you swear or affirm? That I will support the Constitution of the United States? And that I will be faithful? And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland? And support the Constitution and laws thereof? Laws thereof? And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice? Partiality? Execute the office of State Board of Education according to Constitution and laws of the state. And congratulations.
All right.
All right, then we sign the actual big book, the official. It'll be today's date. Next call, your signature. And then next call, we put State Board of Education student member. You can squeeze it in. Last, what's the PO box here? So PO box 2770, Plata Maryland. Is it 2770? Are you all set? And congratulations.
Would you like to say a few words, Treasure? Welcome, too, go ahead.
And your name plate is right there, too.
Okay, one, I would like to say thank you all for coming. I would like to give a shout out to my mom, because if it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be here. And she's also my driver, so thank you. A big shout out to my sister, because she's my campaign manager. She comes right after work, and she's helping me set up with speeches and posters and everything. So thank you to her. Shout out to my godfather, because he listens to my ideas and gives me clarity. So thank you, appreciate you very much. But I'm excited to be on the board and to change the school systems. So thank you.
Welcome again, Treasure, and hopefully you can include us as part of your village. If you'd like to serenade us at any time, feel free. All right, everyone, that concludes our business for today. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Say no, you never have a problem, right? Moved by Ms. Abuja, is there a second? Okay, Mr. Hancock? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you. Kyle, take us off, please.